Okay, thank you for attending the Montclair City Council meeting. I'm gonna call this in order, and we'll begin with the invocation, the pledge allegiance, and I'll have the city clerk announce those two individuals.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Roger Vega of Montclair Christian Church, and the pledge will be led by Councilmember Mendez.
Please join, please stand. I believe that Bible teaches that God cares about people and their communities, and Jeremiah 27 it says that "we are to work for the prosperity and pray for the welfare of our city." So we do so tonight. Father, we thank you for being able to come together tonight as one to invoke your blessing over this time. We pray your wisdom and your guidance over all decision-makers tonight, as we pray as well for the well-being of our city, Lord. We ask that you would protect us from all manner of evil and help us to establish good in this community. We thank you for this time. Amen.
Amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, Andrew, can we have a roll call?
Member Mendez.
Here.
Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Councilmember Rue is absent. Mayor Protem Martinez, here. And Mayor Dutrey.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Next item is public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public that want to address the city council on any item that's on the agenda of this evening, since we have no public hearing items or any items not on the agenda. Obviously, if any items on the agenda we can't discuss per the Brown Act, you have five minutes, and I'll have the city clerk, do you have any speakers?
All right, I have three speaker cards. The first one is Bill Kaufman.
I'm back in 2025. Councilman Mayor, Council Lady, I just wanted to sort of see where you guys are coming on your ordinance. I know you can't reply to it, but hopefully it's in process. We still have our spot on Central Avenue, Shoe City on the second floor there. We're holding that down. I'm not sure how long, because at some point in time you gotta cut your losses, but that's the spot. And I looked at what Pomona did with their Catalyst dispensary, and it was somewhere around in the fourth quarter, somewhere around $4 million. And the revenue was hundreds of thousands to the city of Pomona. And, you know, Montclair, which has the plaza and the spot that we have, I mean, we could add literally over $1 million in revenue to Montclair if we could get this ordinance through and get moving on it. So I just wanted to come back and let you know we're still here, we're still waiting. I think I'll probably come in and see Edward Starr, city manager, and see, he would be the person probably that could give me the information on the ordinance. Other than that, that's it. That's all I got.
No problem, and I would suggest contact staff and see what the status is. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Roxana Garcia, from Assemblymember Michelle Rodriguez's office.
Good evening, council, mayor, councilmembers, and members of the public. My name is Roxana Garcia, and I'm the district director for Assemblymember Michelle Rodriguez. I am here today as not only the district director for Assemblymember Rodriguez, but also as your current representative for the city of Montclair. I want to extend over, you know, partnership opportunities between the state and the city of Montclair. I'm really excited to learn everything that I can here diligently taking notes on city ordinances and different things that are happening in the city. Also wanted to share, as we're putting together our bill package, that I'd love to come in and provide updates on what pieces of legislation the assembly member is putting together that will have direct impacts on the city of Montclair and neighboring communities. Last week, the State Assembly, the State of California voted a bill to provide $2.5 billion in wildfire assistance for immediate help for the victims of the fire. So we're here, we want to help the community. So I'm here to be a voice for the office and also for your council. I also wanted to extend an invitation for the Assemblymember's community swearing-in ceremony that's happening this Saturday at 2:00 PM at our district office. I have a couple of flyers, I'm gonna leave them in the back. I'll be here for the meeting, but if you have any questions or want to talk after the meeting, I'll be available. And again, I'm really happy to be here, and I'll continue seeing you around. Thank you, and have a good night.
You said Saturday, February?
February 8th.
At 2:00 PM?
2:00 PM.
The Chino District Office.
Correct.
Got it, thank you.
131607 Street.
Same location as Freddie's old office?
Correct.
Perfect.
Yes. We didn't move, we're still there, we got a little paint on the walls, new carpet, so, you know, we wanted to stay there to make it easier for the constituents that have already been reaching out to the prior Assemblymember. But, you know, we are there, and I also just wanted to touch on, if you have any constituents that have issues with any State Department, please reach out to our office. We're here to help. In the month of January, we were able to close about 30 cases and get thousands of dollars of unclaimed EDD money out to their constituents, folks that had been on the pipeline of not getting their driver's license, having issues connecting to the departments. So we're here to help, even as things as like folks that are applying for licenses for the board of pharmacy. I was able to get a contact for a constituent within 24 hours. So if you have anything that you might think of that we might be able to help, please reach out. Our office number is 909-902-9606. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just a couple, just two quick follow-ups. Ms. Garcia, is it true that the Speaker's office limited the number of bills a member can carry?
Yes.
What's that limit?
I don't have the number off the top of my head, but I can follow up and let you know.
And then, is your first open house in the works? I know Freddie had one annually, is the Assemblywoman's open house in the planning stages?
Not yet.
No?
Not yet, but we will have one eventually. I think right now, since we just got some office improvements done, we still need a little bit of time to get the office public-ready. But as soon as we have events coming down the pipeline, I'll be here sharing information about events, but more to come.
Great, that was one of Freddie's fun events that I always liked going to, so we can look forward to that one.
Oh, cool. I do believe that the Assemblymember wants to continue the barbecue on the summer.
Perfect.
So there'll be events that will carry on, and there'll be some other ones that we'll be doing fresh. So I'm actually gonna give you an update before the meeting ends on that question.
Thank you, appreciate that. Thank you for coming tonight.
No problem.
Our next speaker is Jonathan Chavez.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Jonathan Chavez, I'm a resident. This is not the first time I've came up to the podium for issues on Oakland Avenue, the theft from the train, breaking into the property that's red-tagged on Mills, break-ins to my neighbor's property, damage to property that's owned by Pomona School District, break-ins to a newly constructed warehouse on the other side of the riverbed, fires in the riverbed, you name it, we've had it happen. I've already brought it up to you. I don't see anything moving forward that's concrete on getting it resolved, and that's why I'm here. I don't know if Martinez, if you had a chance to go out there, Mendez, go out there, Dutrey or Lopez. I seen the city manager out there once, but yeah, it's bad. I've reached out to Brian Lopez, nothing concrete has gotten done. Yeah, it's just horrible what we have to deal with as residents.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask, actually, I'm gonna ask, if you don't mind getting seated, I'm gonna ask Police Chief Reed if he can come up and give us a presentation of what's going on out there, and I'll ask Community Development Director Diaz to talk about the building.
Mr. Chavez, did you mistakenly say Brian Lopez, meaning myself?
Yeah, Brian Ventura, sorry.
Ventura, okay. For a minute there, I thought you were implying, no, I wanted to clarify.
No, sorry.
No problem. And yeah, you have reached out to me, I have not gone out there yet. Thank you for coming tonight, I will make an effort to do so.
Okay, Chief Reed, if you don't mind, come to the podium, please.
Good afternoon, Council. Yes, I was aware that Mr. Chavez called and spoke extensively with Captain Ventura regarding the matter, and the report that I received from Captain Ventura was, we've been down there, in the last 30 days alone, we've had over 17 calls for service, or self-initiated calls for service, where officers have responded to the area for a multitude of different reasons regarding, and not just on Oakland, we're talking about the wash, the halt in the wash, the train track area, Oakland, the business on Mills, in which we've made contact with individuals. We've been targeting enforcement over 17 times in the last 30 days, we've been targeting efforts down there as far as, and also when calls for service do come forward, we do investigate those as well. Our crime suppression, I'm sorry, our special enforcement team has been down there on multiple occasions, whether they're in unmarked vehicles, marked vehicles, and made several multiple contacts with individuals at the location. And the train theft and the train incidents do continue to be a problem as the opportunity arises for individuals to either steal or break into the trains. We ask that people, you know, the members of the public still call us, we'll still respond to those, we'll attempt to get the jurisdiction, the police department in charge of that jurisdiction to handle it, but we'll still, if it affects especially the city of Montclair, i.e. the property traversing across into our city limits, or, you know, an ongoing, or an emergency, we will of course respond down there, as we have on several occasions at those locations. I know that the train thefts have been occurring in multiple different jurisdictions. I know the county sheriff deals extensively with the same types of activities, and arrests are made on multiple occasions, and holding individuals accountable will be our goal, especially with some newer laws pertaining to these crimes being stepped up from misdemeanors to felonies on different, we work closely with the DA's office on these arrests, especially on these, you know, when they take several items from these trains, expensive items, computer items, tires, we've caught people stealing tires down there and return those to the owner. So it's something we're continually working.
Hey, Chief, let me ask you a question. How challenging is it to have a channel in the railroad, in the area, to deal with the transit population?
It provides a definite challenge, as far as jurisdictional challenge as well, and there's, you know, as we all know, there's no real feasible way to make barriers to keep individuals off of that property. Even if barriers were built and fences, you could still go down where the intersections with the train and the highway occurs and walk or drive down each of those directions. It does create a tremendous challenge. Also with our resources being allocated for issues at the train tracks when those do arise, whenever we respond with multiple units down there, that takes away from our officers' ability to patrol other areas of the city during those events. And not only that, the geographic location and just the sheer size, and the places to hide, and the terrain, it's hard to drive at a lot of those places with a vehicle as well.
Yeah, I know there's, well, we can't talk about it on a Brown Act meeting, but I appreciate your department, I know you've been spending a lot of time, the set team's been out there, patrol's been out there, especially in the last three, four months. I appreciate that. I know the challenge that area has, and obviously wish we can throw a lot more manpower in there and barriers in there, but that's even more challenging to do as well. But I'm gonna ask our director, what's going on with that vacant building? Looks like crap, and I know, I already, I mean, I know the answer, but go ahead.
Yeah, the building itself is a magnet for a lot of activity, and because it's in the process, legal process to hopefully help a receiver appointed to take over the property and make the improvements that are needed, we have to wait until the court makes a decision on that particular matter. So in the meantime, what's happening is our code enforcement officers with the assistance of the police department are having to go there frequently to board up buildings and to make sure that any of the property, business owners that have requests to take things from that building back into their possession, they have to coordinate that with our code enforcement officer, seems to spend a lot of time down there, just sort of babysitting that particular facility. We don't have the ability to clean it up yet, because we're in the middle of this legal process. The good news, hopefully, is this Wednesday it goes back to court, and hopefully the judge will appoint a receiver, and so hopefully that means that more action with respect to that building cleanup and fixing it will start to occur hopefully in the near future. So keep your fingers crossed, hopefully the judge will finally make that position.
Appoint the receiver, and the receiver will take control of that building, get it cleaned up, and then decide what the future of that building's gonna be.
That's correct, and right now, what the judge or the court processed, it gave the property owners an opportunity to make some improvements on their own, but they haven't been able to do that.
Okay.
So now, we're at this point where the receivership is probably the most likely answer, and hopefully that's Wednesday.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I also want to point out that we recently completed the homeless count, and it appears that the number will be down, so there has been a positive impact, not only for Montclair, but I think for the state as a whole. I read just this morning that California's homeless number has decreased in comparison to other states who have actually, that have actually seen an increase in homelessness. So apparently, some inroads are being made on that particular issue. I also point out that our approach to dealing with homelessness is far more aggressive than it has been in the past. We offer help, and we'll continue to offer help, and those who accept the help, we will certainly be there to provide the necessary help, including housing, medical assistance, whatever else they need. And if they are not interested in the help, then we are aggressively attempting to deal with those individuals, as opposed to taking a more passive approach that has been typical in the past.
I know we did a cleanup last October, and I think it would be good to have another cleanup this spring in the neighborhood. And I will also encourage if the residents, I know Mr. Chavez is here, but if the residents, other residents want to meet, I'll have a community meeting here at City Hall, or at the police department, to have discussions with staff, I'll be happy to come to it. I would encourage that to occur as well if there's a request. Okay?
And in closing, I do want to, despite the frustrations, urge residents, and, you know, not only at Mr. Chavez's location, but along Brooks and Benson.
Right.
Always call, we'll determine what resources we can or cannot a lot, but at the same time, continue to call us, continue to put in those calls for service, not only whether or not we can catch someone, it still documents that something occurred at a certain time, and it gives us stats and numbers to work with as well, so.
Okay. All right. Again, this is not a Brown Act, but just Mr. Lopez, Councilman Lopez, you have a question?
May I, Mr. Diaz, may I have the address of the building in question? Do you have that offhand?
I do not, but it's at the very, the last building at the end of Mills.
Thank you.
On the east side.
You're gonna see a lot of trash in the front.
Can't miss it.
Because we can't touch it until the court receiver gets appointed, so.
Is this the property near, or is this the area that is the Army Corps Engineers owns as portion of too?
No.
That's separate, okay, that's north of there then, I'm thinking.
You know where that 80's club is, that's the location right there, just south of that.
Okay.
I also want to point out that we have attempted to meet with the Pomona Unified School District to acquire the property in question, and they are not willing to sell at this time, and we have no enforcement power on their property. It is a vacant lot, so I don't know what necessarily damage is being done to the lot, but we have made efforts to do that.
Okay. Mr. Chavez, go ahead.
So why is the, is the money of Montclair being spent on that Pomona school board property or Pomona school property?
We don't spend money on it, because it's not our property, but we've asked to purchase it from them so that we could provide proper enforcement and perhaps develop the property for some other purpose, but they're not interested at this time.
Why aren't they more, why aren't we more aggressively chasing them down to properly secure that property, whether that's legal or not?
It's a regular evolving issue with us, we constantly are asking them to reinforce the fencing, they do, and these individuals just break through everything that is put up.
Yeah, so that's why I'm asking why something, why we aren't going farther, so that we just don't keep putting Band-Aids on the fence, because it's literally like six or seven times, they were just breaking it today, you guys just fixed it, or they fixed it on Friday.
All right, well, farther would mean something other than the chain-link fencing that is put up, and we can't require that they do that if they don't want to expend the funds, but they do repair the fencing when we do require that they do that.
By legal means, is what I mean, to escalate it.
Okay, I don't understand, what do you mean by legal?
Suing them.
Okay, well, again, it would be an issue of where we'd have to go to court, it's not a matter of just suing them, but we would have to go to court to enforce maintenance of the property. And we have been working with the school district to ensure that they do maintain it, and when we do ask them to, they do do that. Unfortunately, the area is a target by individuals in that area, and it's a constant issue.
I'm well aware of that, that's why I bring up seven times, that's why I'm saying going to a farther extent, obviously suing them, you have to go to court.
Again, the issue is that they are taking care of the property.
They're not taking care of the property.
Well, when they're asked to, they do.
They're not taking care of the property.
I'm not gonna engage in an argument with you, sir.
Yes, you know, if you want to have a community meeting, we'll be happy to set it up.
What is the community meeting gonna do to fix the property? Why don't you guys sue them? Do you work for me, a resident of Montclair, or do you work for the Pomona?
No, sir, we work for the people of Montclair, but as I said, the better avenue to have discussions will be at a community meeting. You can contact Sergeant, excuse me, Captain Ventura if you'd like, if you have a contact.
The community meeting's right there, that's why I want everybody to be aware of what's going on, what you guys are not willing to do and what you're doing.
Well, we're willing to do a community meeting, this is a public hearing, I can only give you five minutes, and we gotta go on and discuss concerned county rights. Unless one of the councilmembers wants to put this on the agenda and have a future discussion this, but I don't think that's the appropriate time for that right now. I think the better thing to do is to have a community meeting when the residents can come, if that's what you like to do, and we'll be happy to set it up. We are trying our best, sir. We are certainly trying our best.
No, you're not, you're not, because we've already been dealing with the part.
Not, sir, we are trying our best.
Five years? Five years? Is that, is that dealing with it?
We are trying our best, sir.
That's your best?
Yeah, that's, we are trying our best.
Could a staff member meet with Mr. Chavez to explain the whole legal process and how that handcuffs us for the time being?
We can, well, we can do that, I'm not sure that that hasn't already happened, but we can certainly have code enforcement meet with them, police, if that's necessary as well. But I assure you, we are providing the enforcement, homeless in that particular area is also a responsibility of Union Pacific Railroad, we have met with them, we've engaged in efforts with the Union Pacific Railroad's security staff to address the homeless area and that issue in that area, but once the enforcement efforts abate, the problem comes right back. So it's a constant issue, the Union Pacific Railroad is an attractive nuisance, unfortunately, because of the boxcars that stop there on a regular basis, they're entitled to do that, and this problem will continue until the homeless issue is resolved. And as I've indicated already, we offer help, but if they refuse the help, there's nothing that we can do. The law doesn't allow us to remove them from the streets forcibly, we can encourage them to move on or issue them a citation. Beyond that, there's little else that we can do.
Mr. Mayor?
He's making her out of order now, he can't talk to the audience, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Lopez?
I, to your comment, it appears Mr. Chavez would prefer to have this venue serve as a community service meeting, as you were suggesting. Just a yes or no, is that correct? Okay, if that's correct, so he does not want to do a community service meeting at the community event at the PD or anywhere. So to you colleagues, would you be open to agendizing this for discussion? That way, residents besides him, including him, but also others that may have an interest can come to this venue and discuss it. I'm just gauging the three of you, your opinion on that.
I really think that this discussion, if there is interest among the residents who live on that street, and I've been out there, and only one household so far has been complaining to me, that's the Chavez household. I'm pretty sure other residents may have concerns as well, but they haven't contacted this city, they haven't contacted PD. So I suggest we do, if there is an interest there, I know code enforcement's already made contact, let's have something here at City Hall outside of these norms. If there's a need for this in the future to come back here, we can do that. If City Council wants an update of what took place in the meeting, that can take place as well. It's a lot easier when you have, we could do with the police officers, the code enforcement officers, could take place at 5 o'clock, 4 o'clock perhaps, while the staff is here to hear the issues, Mr. Starr could be in the room as well, and we could hear the issues, plus we get the facts and the information from PD, how many calls for service, what code enforcement it's been doing out there, try to understand the issues, not just for one household, but all the households in that neighborhood.
And I would have to agree with the mayor, that is probably the best setting, the option of having members of the council still there to make themselves available is still going to happen. So I, I hear you, I don't want you to think that we're shutting you down, I mean, it's an ongoing issue, I get that, but there's also limitations through the court and other , I'm sure, legalities that code enforcement faces, and we can't just round up individuals or property of individuals and just clean it up without some form of due process, if you will, is that the appropriate word, Madam City Attorney? Anyhow, I'm just trying to offer it up, but anyhow, we can move on if you'd like.
Again, this is not a Brown Act meeting, so Mr. Mendez.
Yeah, just a couple of questions.
Brown Act item.
Chief Reed, you had mentioned CSU in your comment, I just, do we have the crime suppression unit backed up? Oh, awesome. That's good to hear.
I mistakenly referred to CSU, then I corrected myself, I believe, the set team.
Oh, the set team.
Yeah, special enforcement team. That's, yes, it is fully staffed with four officers, a supervisor, so.
So it's like C-S-U?
Yeah, it's a different term, different acronym for the thing.
That's great to hear, thank you. And then, other question was for Mike Diaz, you mentioned that we have to still store homeless property, even if they trespass or break into a property and put their stuff there, we have to store their stuff still?
Yeah, we still have.
Yep.
We still have obligations to make sure that personal property that really belongs to them, this as distinguished from trash and debris, is maintained for a certain set of time periods, that gives them an opportunity to collect it at a different time.
Okay, and then the last?
And we have to remove it, yes.
And the last thing is, do we still have to get permission from the railroad police division that patrols that area to go onto their property whenever there's issues?
Technically, yes, and we have to coordinate our efforts with them whenever we do something on the railroad, or near the railroad.
All right, that was it, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Martinez.
Yes, Mayor Dutrey, I am inclined to agree with you, only because I'm not quite certain that I'd understand what we would be agendizing, and I appreciate you, Mr. Chavez, for coming forward and discussing the issue. Obviously, it's a much greater issue than on one street in our city, and it would be very helpful to have a discussion where we can really sit and think about all of the greater issues, the bigger issues within the city, and how, what we can do to stop this once and for all, not put the Band-Aids on, like you said earlier. And I just don't understand, if we were to agendize, what exactly, would we just be discussing? I guess that's the part that I'm confused about, what would be the purpose of an agendized item?
Are you asking me, Madam?
No, I'm asking Mayor Dutrey.
Okay.
Well, if I may say, we would have been discussing homelessness, and that is already an issue that we presented to the city council in a workshop last year.
Yeah.
So this is a homeless issue, and they have rights, just like anybody has rights.
Yeah, that's the problem, they have rights.
And we cannot remove them from the street if they're unwilling to be removed. We offer help, and if they accept the help, we provide it. If they don't want the help, there's very little else we can do. The law does not allow us to mandate that they involuntarily go into treatment programs. There are laws on the books that will allow that, like the care court system, but that's for individuals who are on the schizophrenic spectrum, and that requires a medical determination, not a determination by us.
Okay, all right, yes.
Do you mind me responding to what both of them are bringing up?
Well, what we're gonna do is, again, if there's a need for a community meeting, I would ask that you contact the residents. I would ask that you contact the residents, contact Captain Brian Ventura, or contact the city manager. We'll be happy to set up that committee meeting and go through all the discussions in your neighborhood. At this time, we're going to move on. Do you have any more speakers?
I have no more cards.
Okay, so at this time, we're going to go to the consent counter item. I'm going to ask my left, anybody who wants to remove a consent counter item? What about my right?
No, Mr. Mayor. I moved the adoption of the consent counter as presented.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Councilman Lopez, moved by Councilmember Mendez. We'll do electronic-- What happened? All right, it is 4-0. So the next item on the agenda is Communications. I'm assuming the city attorney has no communication. All right, city manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I put on the dais in front of you a memo that I distributed to council members earlier today. This regards OMB Memo M25-13 that was issued by the White House last week. The memo specifically stated that there would be a temporary pause to review agency financial assistance programs. Unfortunately, the memo created a lot of confusion as to what programs, what financial aid, what grants would be under this pause for review, and would those dollars be coming back. Ultimately, the White House did issue a rescission of that memo. However, that rescission also created confusion. There was a court case filed for a temporary restraining order against the memo. In addition to that, there was guidance that was issued by the White House that indicated that departments were continuing to be responsible for vetting all of their financial aid programs to determine whether or not those programs were in violation of any of the president's executive orders that were issued over the course of the last couple of weeks. And in addition to that, there was a statement by the president's press secretary that the only thing that was rescinded was the memo, that the effort to review the financial programs and impose the pause remained in place. So that ultimately resorted in a court action which issued a temporary restraining order on the president's actions related to freezing those funds. However, even a temporary restraining order indicated that each of the federal departments had the right and the responsibility to properly review each of the financial grant assistance programs that they provide, and if they determined that within the course of the rules and regulations that govern those particular agencies and the financial aid programs that they administer, they can certainly impose a pause and reconsider those financial programs. So at this point in time, I guess the best course scenario for states and local governments is to presume that the financial aid that they've received, either in the forms of loans, grants, or whatever type of assistance we're talking about, if there is a federal government connection, that they should proceed cautiously in relation to the allocation of those funds, or the expectation that those funds may be coming to them based on reimbursements from the federal government. So until the court hears this matter, we don't really have a answer one way or the other. So the temporary restraining order, at best, provides us an additional set of guidance, but what we do know is that the guidance that the White House issued, while it is also not fleshed out, it does provide us some indication that grants that are received by state and local governments are perhaps particularly subject to this review process that is ongoing, because two primarily issues related to the guidance are that if the contracts or the grants are allowing for DEI-related issues, diversity, equity, and inclusion-related issues, then that grant should not be allowed to go forward. And if there is any New Green Deal or climate action-related issues related to the grant, then that would also question the availability of that grant and its funding by the federal government. The grants that are received by state and local governments, for the most part, all of the contracts do have DEI components in them, and specifically for Montclair, the grants that we have typically applied for are all related to, I guess, from a broad perspective, one could suggest are related to climate. So, for example, grant funds related to acquiring the Caltrans property at the Trans Center would be designed specifically to help the city's program related to moving people to transit and reducing greenhouse gas emissions. So the $25 million raise grant that we have applied for certainly probably would fall under that, as would all of the active transportation grants related to redesigning our streets, so they were bicycle and pedestrian friendly. Again, would also probably fall under that nomenclature of New Green Deal, although I do want to emphasize that Congress never adopted a New Green Deal bill, but there certainly are a lot of climate action-related bills that have been adopted by Congress that would ultimately fall under that category. Having said that, we did provide the city council with two spreadsheets indicating what grants that the city has received. That would be the first spreadsheet, and that spreadsheet identifies the grants that we've received, monies that we've expended, and monies that remain to be provided back to the city of Montclair should we complete the grant. One would presume that those grants that have federal dollar connections might be protected, but in fact, the language of the grants does say in each of the grants that should there be a question related to funding, that the grant terms are suspended, and the city would not receive the additional funding. So that would be the first table that I provided to you that was attached to that particular email that I sent earlier today. So again, that one talks about the grants that have been awarded and are under contract, and then the second table that was provided to you itemizes all of the various grants that the city has currently either applied for, has been awarded, or are pending. So the issue with these grants are as to whether or not they are tied to state-federal funds. For some of them, we can probably categorically say that they are not. For others, we can categorically say that they are tied to federal funding, and for others, we can only say maybe, probably, we just don't know, because while they may come through the state or through the county, that doesn't mean that they aren't tied to federal funding. So, for example, during COVID, the state, the federal government provided direct COVID money to the state that was then distributed to cities through local grants, but those monies clearly originated with the federal government. And that's the same way with a number of these grants. At this point in time, we don't know. What we do know is that we currently have about $116 million in grants that have been either awarded, are pending, or that we have recently applied for. And amongst those grants, there are about $21 million that are potentially subject to this that we know of at this point in time, but maybe potentially beyond that as well. So until we have additional information, until there's greater clarity, which will probably be provided by the court, subject to an extension of and a final decision on that TRO and what the court is going to determine, and then ultimately, any challenge to that lower court's decision up to and including the Supreme Court, this may be an issue that will be ongoing, but you do need to know that it potentially affects a lot of programs, including construction projects that the city is currently engaged in and looking at. So, for example, $2 million has been awarded for Saratoga Park. We have been advised by the Office of Congresswoman Norma Torres that those $2 million are subject to the pause, and therefore, that would directly affect our ability to move forward on the Saratoga Park project, as well as improvements to the $1 million we have also received from Norma Torres's office in relation to the Trans Center. And obviously, the $25 million raise grant that we've applied for, now the build grant, to acquire the Trans Center property from Caltrans. And those are just a few of the grants that are affected. Again, I want to emphasize, we don't know that we're going to lose this money. It may be nothing more than a pause until the federal government is allowed to align these grants with the president's vision, which is certainly the prerogative of any president when he or she comes into office. They get to make a determination as to how funding affects their vision, provided that their determinations are in compliance with existing laws that Congress has passed. So at this point in time, again, I emphasize, we are being cautious, and my direction to staff is that going forward, if they have questions about a particular grant, that we need to have a discussion about that grant before there is an expenditure of funds.
Okay, again, this is not on the agenda for discussion. Councilman Lopez, do you have a simple question?
Real quickly, any Gold Line money in limbo now or under review?
No, the Gold Line money is all state funds. It doesn't come at all from the federal government. So the $798 million on the LA Metro side, as well as the $80 million on the San Bernardino County side, are clear and free of this concern.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Okay, and then obviously, City Manager Stark, you'll keep us informed if there's any-- if anything's changing that's not good, you let us know.
Absolutely.
All right, thanks. Okay, we'll start with comments from myself. Again, I want to announce that there's a vacancy on the planning commission, and that vacancy, don't have the end date, but it ends-- when does it end?
The application period ends February 9th.
February 9th for the term ending on June 30th, 2027. I just want to recognize this month of February as being the Black History Month, and also the American Heart Month for this month. Of course, we'll also celebrate President's Day to honor all our presidents who served this country. Last Wednesday and Thursday, I had a chance to attend the Cal Cities Mayor's and City Councilmember's Academy that was held, and I was-- came with Councilmember Mendez. I suspect you'll talk more about that event. And then, obviously, last week was the opening of Main Event. I've been back there since the opening, and I think it's going to do really well here in Montclair. So I will start with Councilmember Martinez. Mayor Porten Martinez.
I don't have much, other than saw the mayor bike riding around my neighborhood yesterday. So that was nice. That's all I have.
Councilmember Mendez.
Yeah, just basically to reiterate what you mentioned about attending the three-day seminar for the newly elected mayors and Councilmember Academy through the League of California Cities. I thought John was there to watch me, but he got a lot out of it also, so I appreciate him being in there. But other than that, that was it. Thank you very much.
And what subjects did you participate in? What sessions did you attend?
Well, the first-- I attended every single one of them, but the first one was the two-hour harassment, and then the last one was the two-hour ethics, and in between that, we talked about council relationships with your city manager, making sure they work well and so, yeah. So that was my favorite one.
And attend, so it's not subject to me.
Also a session on budgets, session on land use, sessions on city governments. You were there, but--
Everything.
But he was there for the entire thing. There were some other councils, newly elected councilmembers that were hanging out in the lobby, hanging out in the bar, so.
What bar?
A bar in the hotel.
I don't remember that.
There was a bar there. I wasn't there too, but there was a bar there. I saw people hanging out. Councilmember Lopez?
Yes, two quick things. Inquiry to the city manager, does the city get notified by any other department, whether it's county or state, regarding spraying of any particular insecticide or whatnot within the city limits? Do we get advance notice of that?
Advance notice of what? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Spraying of insecticides of any kind within the city limits?
Well, that would be the West Valley Vector Control, and they don't normally give us advance notice, except when it relates to a particular concern that is a regional issue, like the recent-- I forget the name of the nomenclature for the particular citrus bug, but anytime they do spraying in relation to that, yes, we do get notification.
Well, I bring it up only because the resident brought to my attention, and I'm assuming the area in question was San Jose in the north to San Bernardino in the south on the eastern side of the city. Some residents got notice that there was to be spraying on January 30th regarding the Asian citrus--
Yeah, that's it, right there.
The other name I can't say, but it's an insect. But anyhow, spraying did happen within the city. They were wanting to know if the city knew of it in advance. It caught them off guard. When I got this, I said I didn't hear of it, but then I would ask it at council, so anyhow. So you're saying that we normally do not get notice on this?
I don't recall receiving a notification on that, but what I do receive on a, maybe a quarterly basis, is a updated map regarding the areas where the particular Asian citrus bug is located, and that at that point in time, if there is a planned spraying, they will notify the city of that, but it's been several months since I've received that notification.
Yeah, I remember receiving those in the past too, but I haven't received one in a while. Yes, Xavier, do you have a question to answer that question?
Well, yes, the county ag department is actually responsible for notifying cities, but if there's any spraying that goes within 500 feet of any elementary school, junior high or high school, that school has to be notified 48 hours in advance. Anything throughout the city, though, unless it just depends on what they're spraying, has to be also notified. But other than that, we should get notifications from the county ag department.
Having said that, that was exactly-- that's the exact agency that issued these notices to Montclair residents. I would like to have staff, if we could, Mr. City Manager, inquire as to was notice given, and if indeed, if they claim it did, when and who, and if not, ask them why. And I will forward you a copy of this notice that I was given. And then the mayor alluded to it. On January 23rd, as I stated at the last meeting, we did have on the dock at the grand opening for Main Event at the Montclair Plaza underneath AMC Theaters, and it was a great event that most city staff and council members all attended. I was really impressed. The bowling alley is pretty fun. The meeting rooms in there are similar to John's Incredible Pizza, similar to Bullwinkle's that just reopened, so you could run out a room and have a little bit of privacy and conduct your affairs there, have food catered and whatnot. Did anyone on the council, or even staff, did they point out the one particular room that had the maps of all the cities in the room? Anybody point that out to you? There are maps, similar to what we have. I forgot where we have the map of our city. Ours is there. There was a staff member who said, "You want to see where Montclair is?" I'm like, "Sure." And because we're small, of course, they put us kind of in the corner with a little bit of a wall, but nonetheless, if you get that table of six or eight, you can have Montclair's map right behind you. But anyhow, it's in one of those rooms, just adjacent to the bowling alley. A little bit of a trivia, I guess we can ask if we want to do some type of fun little thing, is find the Montclair map in the room, but it was pretty cool and clever. I wish them great success. I really do think it's going to be an added benefit to that business there at that site, especially when housing comes, when other businesses come. It will definitely, in my opinion, at least it's my desire, that it'll be utilized constantly, and folks would just-- it'll be a draw, not just for Montclair residents, but those that want to visit and come check it out. And I hope, beyond the curiosity factor, that that same interest is there. So I'm really thrilled. I thank them for investing in the city, being the only one in the state of California, by the way, and I wish them all the best. But anyhow, that was awesome. That was an awesome time. With that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
All right, thank you. You have some committee minutes, excuse me, committee minutes in your agenda, and with that, we adjourn.